I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Shall we have a roll call of the board members?
Here.
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 All right. We're all here. I guess the next order of business is the election of officers for our 2025 year business.
Are you willing to be moved from vice chair to chair, Chris?
I am willing if others propose that I should do so.
I would make a motion that we elect Chris DeGud as Chair of the Planning Commission.
Support. Is there any further discussion? Would you like to add to that renewal of our current secretary and what are our other officers?
Vice Chair.
Vice Chair, that one, yes. Actually, we need a new vice chair.
Yes, we do.
We do.
Shortcuts aren't going to work, Chief. Nice try.
Well, let's, we'll, I guess, we have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion passes. We have a new chair, thank you very much. I hope I can continue to do as well as Joe and John before him, and I trust that you guys will let me know if I don't. So, we need a vice chair, and perhaps, Joe, you would be willing to renew office of secretary?
Sure, I'll take it. I'll do that.
Okay.
Molly, would you be willing to be vice chair?
I will.
Excellent.
I'll move that we elect Molly as vice chair and Joe as secretary.
All right, we have-
Support.
Motion by Racine, support by Fudge, for Molly to be vice chair and Joe to be secretary. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same? All right, we have a new slate of officers for the 2025 year. With that, we'll move on to public comment. And we do have one item on the public hearing agenda, that being the Tower North Wireless Communication Facility. All of our other business is not open for a public hearing at this time, but there is an opportunity to public comment now, and again at the end of the meeting. So, anyone who would like to make a public comment, feel free to step up to the mic, give us your name and address, and share with us what you have to say.
My name's Kevin Clark. I live at 4900 Green Hill Court. I'm interested in understanding what they're hanging on the tower, and I have a small drone business that may be impacted by the radio frequencies on what they're putting up.
Okay, thank you. And that will be, the tower will be open for further public comment, just, anyone else who would like to make public comment?
That could be related to the tower.
Well, the opportunity that you could make a comment now, however, the opportunity when we're considering public comment related to the tower is during the public hearing for the tower.
My name's Mark Plotzky. I live at 4195 Eagles View in Traverse City, and I'm interested in the PUD changes that are being proposed tonight. Do I go on?
Feel free, yes.
Okay. I'm against making the changes, and the reason is, the area there is already congested. There's only one entrance and one exit. One has a traffic light, the other one doesn't, and when the certain time of day comes, it's a rat race to get out, and if you're a resident that's trying to get in or leaving, you are, your efforts are thwarted because of the quantity of people that are leaving at lunchtime or end of day or in the morning, and then you also have random people that drive in that area, like, because of medical facilities, and I've almost gotten hit by a number of people leaving the parking lots of the medical facilities because they don't, they don't look. They use the stop sign as a yield at best. There's a gigantic circular mirror there to try to mitigate any potential damages or accidents. And anyways, when I purchased my house last year, I purchased it because of the residential community being a quiet area, and the lots there and the houses that you build are very expensive, and I would be concerned that the property values in the houses are going to go down in value with the changes that are being proposed. I'm definitely against a large group home dwelling with multiple family. I don't even know what a professional showroom or professional studio is that's listed on permitted uses, but I think it's detrimental to the property values, to the traffic, to the safety. I mean, in that area there, there's a daycare center, and they go walking every day just about with their children, and they're going to be walking down there where all the construction is and where more traffic flow will occur. So, all in all, I am against making it more, or more commercial, and even to the extent of residential with group homes and facilities of that sort. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Plotzky.
Live at 4197 Eagles View. Most of my concerns pertain to Building 10. I've seen more information from our previous meeting now that answer a lot of the questions that I had and the correspondence that I sent to the board, but the remaining questions and concerns with the Building 10 is that if the proposal is residential apartments or condominiums, that having an apartment building overnight stay facility at the entrance to the Eagles View Association may likely result in negative impact to the property values, to the Eagle Vale Association owners. To the best of my knowledge, the original PUD did not propose residential units at that site. The commercial office buildings in the Copper Ridge Development are typically occupied from 6A to 6P. If the Building 10 area was deemed residential, there's propensity of 44 additional parking spots that would potentially be busy 24/7, and that would change the character of our EV Association in a negative impact. If residential apartment buildings are built, the commercial type bright outdoor lights would adversely affect the Eagle Vale Association owners. If rental units are built, will the rental units have maximum occupancy, or what is the maximum occupancy? Would there be minimum stays? How many people per residential unit? Are the residents transient, non-permit dwellers? And if the residents, would the rent out be comparable to the area and not low-income housing? So, in consideration above, my husband and I don't support the apartment residential setting in Building 10. Additional time for further specifics is requested.
This is in regard to the tower. We own the property directly south, White Pine Partners. Couple questions I have is how much radiation is going to be given off? Will it be safe to put the 60 proposed units that we plan on putting on our property for the workhouse apartments? When you Google it, there's a lot of scary things, obviously, when you Google cell towers, how far away you should be.
Sorry to interrupt. I didn't get your name or your-
Oh, Mike Hanson, sorry. I don't know the address of our property. It's White Pine Partners. It's directly south, so we bought-
Your own personal address, that would be fine.
I live in Green Lake Township, 6,000 Village Drive, Tarce, Michigan. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
So, couple questions. Basically, how much radiation will it give off? When we go to propose our development, you know, we're going to be investing $16 to $20 million in this development. If anyone Googles, you know, is it safe for me to live next to a cell tower? It ranges anywhere from a couple hundred feet to a couple thousand feet, just depending on if you're looking at World Health Organization. There's a bunch of different stuff out there, and who knows what's right, but if it's in Google, you know, our tenants aren't going to be fact-checking how far they should actually be away from, you know, if it's fertility or cancer issues that pop up as soon as the Google search is done. The tower is proposed to be 160 feet off of our property. The housing would likely be pretty close to the property land, so we'd be within 200 to 300 feet away from the tower. So, I'm just looking for more information about radiation levels. Will we have an issue when we go to build our 60 to 80 units? Will we be getting a hard time by you guys saying, well, it's not safe to build this close to the tower anyways? So, that's the concerns that we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sheri Treppa, 2768 East Crown Drive. I'm concerned about the cell towers as well. I think, I sent to John a recent study. It was fairly recent, and I hope you got it to everybody, or if not, I can get it to everybody, but it's a pretty recent study on these cell towers, particularly the 5G, which have to be closer because the radiation spreads a little bit further. What they found in New Hampshire at this commission, and this was really December 24th of this past year that this study was published, was that the setback needed to be at least 1,640 feet, and where my place is at the Crown, it looks like I'm in the 300-foot range, so that's a little close, and these do put off quite a bit of radiation, and I think that the proposed part of the property where they're going to put that down is a little too close to the homes. There's a lot of room the other way that those could go. I think it's not only dangerous in terms of the radiation, that, you know, children, one thing, affects their brains, affects adult brains, too, with things like dementia and all kinds of things that can happen, but we don't really want these in our area for our health, but we also don't want them for property values, just like that gentleman just was expressing, and I think, happy to share this. If it didn't get around, I can email it to anybody that might want to read it, but I think it should really be considered before we put a tower that close to our property. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to remind everybody again, there is a public hearing regarding the tower later in the meeting. You're welcome to talk now about it, but typically, we have comments related to, public hearings occur during the public hearing. Thank you. Anybody else who has a public comment?
My name is Suzanne Murphy, 4276 Eagle Vale. To start with, I do not support adding the term residential to the current and future buildings in the Copper Ridge Development. I have attended the last two meetings in front of this commission. I've also listened to other presentations related to business usage in Garfield Township. For example, when the Cherry Land Mall group was here to present theirs, the panel asked them numerous questions, and they sent them back to gather more information. I am requesting the same courtesy. I don't believe we've had enough information, enough details from Copper Ridge to agree to this amendment. In reviewing the sentences in your commission minutes of December 11th, under unfinished business PD 2024-108, number six, the minutes say, quote, "proposed amendment is conversion of three building locations in Copper Ridge from office to office, commercial or residential, and conversion of one building location in the Copper Ridge retail marketplace from retail to office to office, commercial or residential," and it goes on to say that applicants would be restoring up to 90 residential units. Also noted on page two of six, the planning commission noted that the concerns they had, I read your agenda, and right in your notes, it says, quote, "the uses of Building 10 due to the proximity to nearby residentials. Building 10 had been previously approved for general and professional offices, service, retail. Staff," and I'm assuming the staff here, the township, "staff was unable to find a clear definition of service retail, but generally, it can be considered to be a business selling services rather than physical goods," end of quote. Then there's a list of 13 uses, including adult foster care dwelling, multiple family, physical fitness facilities, to name a few. We need a delay for the community's goodwill to get correct or accurate information. Changes could possibly affect our property values and community cohesion. Yes, changes have been made over the years at Copper Ridge. Yes, part of the request references the original plan, and they want to return to part of it. True. Can our decisions today be based upon what we've learned over the 20 years of having that development? What have we learned? More traffic, people running stop signs, bright lights, advertising businesses. 20 years ago, the expectation was to fill up office space. Now, the offices are not full. This doesn't mean that we have to add in 90 more residential units. Condos, mixed apartments, short stays and the like, renters versus owners, short-term versus long-term. What are the details? Who's going to manage them? Who will occupy them? These are questions that I have. In last month's meeting, it was stated by Copper Ridge LLC, right up here, that Building 10, quote, "could be residential or commercial." Well, as stated earlier, I am opposed to Building 10 being residential. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jan Freeman, 4284 Eagle Vale. I am the president of the Homeowners Association, for Eagle View Homeowners Association. As you see tonight, a few, and I know that you have in your package, packages, letters from other of our members that have concerns that have been raised about this project. So, my plea for you tonight is to please delay your decision tonight and give us more time, as Ms. Murphy has talked about, to do more due diligence. Connie Dentworth, representing the Copper Ridge LLC, very nicely reached out. She was gone for a couple months. You know, it's holiday season. People deserve to have time with their family, and she had it, thankfully, but now she's back. She's had agreed, agreed to meet with the Copper Ridge folks, anybody that wants to come, to answer all of their questions, to assure us not just what her plans are, but what can happen in writing versus the PUD document, which frankly, we've never been able to get our hands completely on. We only have the beginning parts of it, so we can't study that ourselves, and she's also graciously agreed to give us that so we can study it. We can study the future. So, what we're asking, I believe, is very reasonable. A delay so we can achieve more information from Copper Ridge, which they have agreed to do now, and so we can address our concerns. I would welcome the township folks at that meeting that Connie's going to go through that, so we have, and all have a same understanding, and if anything needs to be changed in the PUD application, that it is done at that time for your review, and hopefully for our support as it moves forward. I thank you on behalf of our association for all the work you do, all these horrible winter nights that you come out. So, thank you for that work and that expertise that you're sharing. What we're asking for is a delay of time, a delay of action, a delay of action, so we can have more time to understand the project and become supportive of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to comment? All right. Thank you, everyone. With that, we'll move on to our next item in our agenda, which is a review and approval of the agenda and a statement of any conflicts of interest.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Support. Staff has a comment. Go ahead, John.
We did receive an item from Ollie's Bargain Outlet, and I know that's not on the agenda, but it's for your consideration to maybe include it under other business, just to do a cursory introduction to it, is something for your consideration. You don't have to, but I just, I mentioned to them, they kind of missed the deadline for it, but I indicated that I'd probably at least offer you, offer the Planning Commission the opportunity to take a look at it.
I change my motion.
Sure, if you'd like.
Sir, I make a motion that we up the agenda with the changes to nine for Ollie's.
So, we will add to-
Item nine, other business.
Other business.
Other business. Would that be new business or other business?
It's not introduced, it's not being introduced formally. Now, we haven't conducted our completeness review at this time, but it does at least afford you a chance to get aware of the project.
So, just some discussion of Ollie's, that's what we were suggesting on the change to the agenda. Okay.
Support.
Support. All right, we have a motion by Augustinelli, support from Klein, to approve the agenda with the modification of adding an item to other business. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same? All right, that motion is passed. We'll move on to review of the, review and approval of the minutes from our December Go ahead, John.
Chris, I had a question, or I guess a suggested slight tweak on page five. Item D is a lot of conditions that's had to do with the Two Brothers Dog Park, and we added a bunch of conditions, and item six indicates that-
Minutes. I had one on page five, item six, under C, says, it's just a slight typo, "any changes to outdoor lighting shall be conformed to the zoning ordinance," and I think it should just read "shall conform to the zoning ordinance." Strike the word B.
Where are you, Chris?
Page four, item C, number six. "Any changes to outdoor lighting shall conform to the zoning ordinance," striking the word B.
Got it. Thank you.
Would anyone like to make a motion regarding the minutes?
I'll make the motion to support the minutes with the two changes.
Support.
Motion by Robertson, support from Fudge. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same. Motion passes. All right, we will move on from there to correspondence, and I think, John, you wanted to go through the correspondence that we've received.
Yes. First of all, I have to apologize for the pile of papers on there. There's a little bit more here than correspondence, but I thought this would be appropriate time in the agenda to kind of review these items. Some of these are just references that will be utilized later this evening as you consider the cases in front of you. Kind of group them in, by content. There's, I just kind of go through these, kind of at the top and go towards the bottom. The first part is related to Copper Ridge. There's the actual plan development application, followed by that is kind of a large document, but it's, it's a portion of the application that established the plan unit development back in 2003, and it has, it's basically titled Copper Ridge LLC Plan Unit Development Application to Amend the Special Use Permit, August 20th, 2003. I will, when we get to that case, I can kind of reference some points of why they, it's not, you're not intended to understand that document. There's just a couple key paragraphs, just so you can see where they are coming from, and that went back to the original approval. It's actually an amended approval of the original plans for the Copper Ridge Plan Unit Development. Followed that, there's, in reviewing the recommended motion that we placed in the PD report on this case for this evening, thought it needed to be a little bit clarified, so there's a little tweak to the last sentence on that motion, so I'll, this is just a revised motion, but it will address that once we get to that item. That is followed by the public comment that we've received. These are the emails, since basically the last meeting all the way up to January 7th, which was yesterday, so those are all the emails. Most of this was provided to you on Monday. It should have been in the packet, but we did email it out to everybody. There were a couple that were, let me see, one, two, three, that were not part of that. Those are the ones that we received Monday afternoon, two of them on Monday afternoon, and the one yesterday on the 7th. That's followed by a handout that we prepared as, hopefully, maybe to, as a handout, it's on the agenda table here, that people could pick up as they came in regarding the PUD in terms of the major amendment, what's being considered here, particularly just honing in on the current permitted uses, as well as comparing that to the proposed permitted uses. This is just intended to be another way of displaying what we've kind of been discussing over the last couple meetings, but just as presented in a table form. So, those are all the items related to Copper Ridge. Following that, there is some communications. There's a letter, January 7th, from David Stout regarding the cell tower. There's also, following that are two documents. One is entitled Restrictions on Zoning Authority from MSU Extension. There's also, following that is an excerpt from the, it's from the United States Code. It's referencing the Telecommunications Act of 1996 as amended. Again, I'll refer to those when we get to that case. And then inadvertently, the last piece of that pile, but it should have been up with that tower case, is we received a, there's a highlighted part about safe distance from towers. That was Rick Grisell from the Crown was in on Monday, and he wasn't able to be here at the meeting, but he wanted to provide that to the Planning Commission. And then the one just before the end there is the application for the Ollie's Bargain Outlet. That's what's been submitted so far, and I'll, obviously, we'll review that when we get to the agenda.
So, you'll discuss these in greater detail relative to the items on the agenda that they're associated with?
Correct.
Okay. Any other correspondence?
That's it for now.
Okay. All right. Well, with that, we'll move on to reports, and I guess we'll start with the Township Board.
Township Board has not met since before Christmas. Township Board has not met since before Christmas, so I have no report.
Any Planning Commissioners with reports?
We had no meeting for the zoning board.
Parks and Recreation has not met.
And the Joint Planning Commission meets again at the end of the month, so probably won't be until February that I can tell you whatever happened at that meeting.
Very good. Steve, John, I noticed that there was a staff report included in the packet. Do you have any further comments you want to make on that, or does it speak for itself?
Mostly speaks for itself. And then, one of the kind of bigger items for the study session, which I know is an item for next month, is actually our annual report. So, kind of compiling all these, I think this is the first year we fully did these monthly reports for both the Board and distributing to planning commissions, so it helps to reference those when we go back and compile the annual report, which you'll see in a couple weeks.
Very good. All right, let's move on to unfinished business, starting with item A, PD 2025-2, North, Tower North Wireless Communication Facility SUP, public hearing. And, John, you want to just get us started?
Steve, kind of do an overview?
I'll just start, and then, John, you'll add some at the end of this as well. So, to give an overview, this proposed cell tower wireless communication facility is at 2767 Zimmerman. It's part of the Alpers gravel mine area, just northwest of Zimmerman and Silver Lake intersection. This was originally, the application was originally submitted last summer, and we reviewed things relative to Section 792 of the ordinance. The issue at the time was, there are several, there's a couple different references to setbacks, one of which is at the minimum to have a setback distance equal to or grade to than the height of the tower. The original proposed location was closer than that, so we referred it back to the applicant. It was tabled for several months to propose an alternate location, and they submitted what is in your packet, and there's some supplemental information with that as well. So last month, we essentially reintroduced the application with that location, and in reference to all of the Section 792 standards. And so, that brings us to the public hearing. We did receive some correspondence, which is what John just went over, and also the email. I, sorry, I actually thought the email from the, one lady was here for, who referenced the study in New Hampshire. We can provide that link as well. It was sent via a link, so we can provide that as well, and we'll talk about it as well. We did a little bit of research based on some of those comments we received, and that's what John is going to talk about with the MSU extension and the portion of the federal code that we were able to find in relation to that. But otherwise, this is the public hearing, and we've already heard a couple at public comment. And I believe we have someone from the applicant team here as well.
Want me to cover these?
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, so I think it's, it's important to understand what the authority of the Planning Commission is in terms of making this review. We're basically following the zoning ordinance in specifically Section 792, which we, which deals with wireless communication facilities, and it's primarily dealing with the siting of the structures and where they're located within Garfield Township. There are limitations to the authority of what the township can and cannot do, particularly when it comes into relation with the placement of cell towers. There is the Telecommunications Act of 1996. It's a federal act. It has since been amended several times, but there are, as with, we have with other restrictions on zoning authority in Michigan, these are, this is a federal statute that actually has limitations on state and local siting of these facilities. This is similar to other restrictions that we have. For instance, we cannot do zoning for public school locations and so forth. This is in relationship to, I know we've received some communications and concerns and comments from residents regarding the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions, and that is one of the areas that the Telecommunications Act speaks on, and its reference there, highlighted in the Restrictions on Zoning Authority from the MSU Extension, but specifically in the other subsequent document that is referencing the United States Code, there's the Section 332. I highlighted on a follow-up page there, where it talks about local zoning authority. There's limitations, and it specifically says, "No state or local government or instrumentality thereof may regulate the placement, construction, and modification of personal wire service, personal wireless service facilities on the basis of the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions, to the extent that such facilities comply with the commission's regulations concerning such emissions." So, that places limitations on what this Board or the township can do in terms of its zoning ordinance, but it's, I think, if anything, it does indicate that they must comply with the requirements of the FCC. So that is something that does allow the township to ensure that they are meeting those requirements. So, something, evidence of, to, that they are meeting those requirements are, I think, are something that could be addressed through the review of this special use permit. So I just want to kind of highlight some of that stuff as you go through your discussions.
So, if I understand you correctly, John, you're saying that this body has no authority to regulate the location of a cell tower based on any perceived implications of environmental or health effects. That regulatory authority lies with the FCC.
Correct.
And so, we can certainly hear comments regarding that, but we cannot change, we kind of make any ruling on the location or the approval of the tower. But I hear you saying that we could consider perhaps adding a request to verify that FCC regulations are being satisfied.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have.
Well, with that, should we open the public hearing?
Want to let the applicant present something?
If the applicant has anything to present, I suppose the applicant could step forward.
My name's Mike Doddamire. Address is 3875 MSC Parkway, Suite 280, Akron, Ohio. I don't really have anything to present. I know we've been in front of you guys a couple times. I'm primarily here to answer any questions or concerns, so if you don't mind, I can address some of the concerns that were already brought to the commission's attention previously during public comment. The gentleman with the drone, we, every antenna carrier has their own frequency that they're licensed to, and the reason why they do that is to avoid any interference with other equipment. I don't know how drones operate, but I do know we commonly use drones to do antenna installation inspections, repairs, and things like that, and we never have any disruption issues whatsoever. The gentleman that had brought up the 160-foot, I believe his property is directly south, I believe we addressed that by moving the tower further away from the southern property line. I think that was kind of what the issue was. So we are, in fact, meet the code, and we are 160 feet, which is greater than the height of the tower away from all property lines and that existing residents on that property. As far as health effects, I think John, you know, pretty much summed it up. That is up to the FCC, and we're more than happy to provide any documentation and any filings we are required to do as a condition of an approval prior to getting the building permit issued. That's a very common thing. We have no issue doing that. I don't necessarily have to address it, but I like to. I know that there's a lot out there on the internet. I will say, from a personal standpoint, my kids went to school with the cell tower on their property. They're still alive. They've got all five, you know, all fingers, everything's good, no issues. I would urge anybody with concerns to look at viable sources. American Cancer Society is a good one. There are no current studies out there today able to prove that there are any negative health effects with regards to towers. And the way I explain the way RF emissions work is, if you have a flashlight, and you have that flashlight right in front of your face, it's going to be very bright, very strong. It kind of goes out like this. It dissipates. By the time you hit ground level, we're at fractions of what the federal government says is safe. You can equate it to no more than a microwave, baby monitors, your Wi-Fi actually has more RF emissions, your Wi-Fi routers in your home. So, that is as much as I can say about that, and I would just say, if there are concerns to the public, please be careful what you read, make sure it's good sources. Property values, same thing, you're going to get a mixed bag. I always say that it is beauties in the eye of beholder. Some people don't want to buy a home with utility wires above ground. Some people don't care. I would say that about 75%, and that was of 2018, people didn't even have, don't have home lines anymore. They're all cell phone. That's, just shows the importance of having a strong wireless infrastructure in your community. You have the newer generation coming up, and they're buying houses. One of the main things they look for is, how's my wireless service? Now Verizon, T-Mobile, all your carriers, they're offering routers in your home to get rid of your, you know, typical cable or typical internet. So, it's even more apparent that a strong service, wireless service, is extremely important to the younger generation. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have, or any other concerns or questions the public has. Thank you.
Does the commission have any questions at this time?
I think I'd rather wait till I hear from the public and see what questions are left.
Okay. Well, with that, we will open the public hearing. I would ask that those who have already made comments, if you have anything new to add, feel free, but please keep your comments to, within about three minutes, but feel free to step forward and make any comment you have regarding the, the cell tower north, Tower North Wireless Communication Facility SUP.
Again, my name's Kevin Clark. I have, I used to live down in St. Louis, Missouri. I provided services, inspecting cell towers, power lines, that type of stuff. My concern has been, there is radio frequency noise from incorrectly installed, bad wiring, that type of stuff. And I have lost drones because of that, and I'm not talking about the little consumer drones. So, I'm just interested in what, what you guys are planning on putting on the towers. So, that's it. Thank you.
Can we get all of the comments?
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Dave Landis, my wife and I live at 2959 Crown Point Drive in the Crown Development. We're in proximity to the potential cell tower. I'm new to this business, so I Google, like everybody else, and I found this Environmental Health Trust lawsuit against the FCC back in '21. They won the lawsuit in that the FCC, coincidentally, it's been noted, they're not medical people, okay? Why the Health and Human Services, or whoever's in charge of this, pushed it off on the FCC to make decisions on health, distance, and schools, things like that, it's, no one seems to know the answer. So the FCC is in charge of this, as the gentleman said. My question is, and a lot of questions, they're not medical experts, okay? So, right out of the chute, we've got a question there and some concerns. The lawsuit was won by this environmental trust, excuse me, a group, and they wrote a letter back in 2021 to Representative in Lansing, and they asked for his assistance. I don't know where that's at, at this moment. I'm going to do some checking. It was Representative James DeSanna, House, Lansing somewhere in the, in the House. But the, the letter here describes, they're satisfied with the ruling, but they want answers from the FCC, and as of this time, the FCC ignored their request to further enhance information about the medical part of it that we're talking about. So, we don't know where that stands at this point. The contention by this group, and we highlighted a couple things here, we consider radio, radio frequency radiation to be a human carcinogen based on current body of evidence. Again, that's from 2021. There's six pages of support worldwide talking about this issue, with different countries weighing in, and the six pages are listed at the back of this report. So if any of you would like to see the report, I'd be happy to supply it to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment? All right, we'll close the public hearing and return to the Planning Commission. Any thoughts?
I've got a thought. We looked at this application many, many months ago, and because of the location, and we were concerned about if the tower fell down, it didn't comply with setback requirements. I think of other items that we had to check, that was the only one that we were aware of at the time, was potentially an issue, and then the applicant took a few months to renegotiate with the landowner, a new location, and now it sounds like they've checked that box as far as the location, if the tower were to fall. But tonight's the first time I've ever heard anything about this radiation challenge. It's the first time I've heard that there's, the stuff that John was just talking about, about what authority we have or don't have. And I'm troubled a little bit by being told that we can't do anything about the health effects potentially, if there are any, because the FCC has preempted that. That may be true, but this is the first I've ever heard of any of this. And I guess it's a significant enough issue. I'd be, I think, inclined to suggest that perhaps we ask the township attorney to take a look at that, and our hands is tied by the FCC statute as, as is indicated in, in this material, and if so, we may have nothing we can do about that. But, but if there, if our hands aren't so tied, then that might be something else that needs to be considered. And I'm not necessarily suggesting, I, I don't think the tower should be there yet, but I'd like to be able to get some information before we just go ahead and approve something, just because it's been out there for a while.
John, do you think that that, getting the opinion of the township attorney with regard to that issue could be done in conjunction with direction to prepare a finding of fact, or do you have something else in mind?
Well, I'm not sure how we would direct a finding of fact without knowing which way we want things to go at this point. It seems to me ordinarily, and in looking at the criteria that we have to look at, there's the setback things we talked about, but also if you look at the, the report on page five from staff, under item 3C, we could request a greater setback requirement, if substantiated by a need to minimize the blah, 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 and public safety impacts of the facility or antenna. And I think that's what some of these folks are suggesting, is that 160 feet isn't far enough. And I have no idea whether they're right or they're wrong. And that, and it would be interesting, I think, to find out whether it's totally in the hands of the FCC and we wash our hands of it, or whether we don't. And if, if council reviews that and, and studies it and tells us it's all preempted by the FCC, we can't do a thing. Like, as John mentioned, we can't regulate where schools locate, that's been preempted and taken from our authority. If the same sort of thing has happened here... and taken from our authority. If the same sort of thing has happened here, it may not be what we're happy to hear, but if that's the way it is, that's the way it is. But I don't know if that's the way it is yet.
Anyone else have some thoughts? Ollie?
So you're just looking for more information on the health benefits and whether or not we can use those in our finding?
Well, can that be considered, or can it not? It sounds like from the information that was provided on our table that we're just looking at by the seat of our pants right now, it sounds like, no, we're not supposed to consider those impacts. But I'd like somebody like Scott, the township attorney, to take a look at that and tell us if there's been any changes in, in any of that, whether that, what, what the court opinions may or may not have been on it. And if we can't have anything, if we can't consider the health impacts as a part of our decision-making process, then we can't. But if we can, then I think we probably dive deeper and ask for information and have tried to weigh in on, is this radiation thing a problem, or isn't this radiation thing a problem?
Well, this is all new information.
It sure is.
Oh, we just got it on our desk five minutes before the meeting, so we really haven't even had time to digest it at all.
No. And this is the first meeting, even though the, the topic of a tower came up six months ago, this is the first time the health issue has ever surfaced to any of us. So that's why I didn't think it's unreasonable to suggest, let's get some